Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 28th, 2013 Board Meeting of the NIC Board of Trustees. This is our August meeting. I know you all missed us in July, but we're back. And I would ask if you would all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would now like to verify that we have a quorum. All of the trustees are present. We don't have any guests listed. We do have a gentleman by the name of John Trombold, who has signed up for public comment, and we'll get to that in a minute. First, we need to go over the minutes, and has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, do I have a motion with regard to them?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as proposed.
Is there a second?
Myra's second. So this is the June 26 minutes?
Yeah, there's two sets of minutes there, and I think we're talking about the June minutes, and then we'll go on to the next set. Do you have a second for that?
June 27, yes, June Myra.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then let's go on to the second set of minutes. That was for our workshop, I think.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
July 25.
So moved.
Second?
Myra's second's it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just, is there a point for comment here, Mr. Chairman? There was a couple of points on here regarding some issues that were there that are not reflected in this, so I'm sure we're going to cover some of those. So there was lots of exchange on this public comment regarding parking space, things like that, that were pretty significant things. So I don't know, we want to go through and amend those now, but I think that we're going to discuss these tonight, so.
Now would be the time to amend the minutes themselves. I suspect we can always comment on that tonight, and it will go in tonight's minutes, if that would satisfy your inquiry.
Well, I think that one of the, it says under here, under the minutes, that some discussions took place about the availability of parking spaces based on the needs identified, which is the total discussion about the parking out. There was a major discussion talking about that we clearly do not have on one of the proposed sites, and a parking, 550 parking spots for a proposed 5,000-seat arena is not sufficient. So we had some long, lengthy discussions regarding this, and I don't think this is a reflection of the height of the concern that that was.
Again, I do not know, quite frankly, I don't believe that we taped that meeting. In fact, as I'm sure, we did not tape that meeting.
We did not.
So there's nothing more than the minutes to go on. So if you want to add something to these minutes, and if you can think of what you might want to add in there, please do so. We are going to have a report from President Dunlap with regard to the ad hoc committee's report, which was, this was sort of an interim report of the committee to the board, and we're going to have that final report tonight. So we will have an opportunity to go over those items again tonight, if you want to put it in tonight's minutes.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would just add something, that there was a continued discussion and major concerns about the number of parking spots for a facility this size that's been proposed.
She's got it. Did we get it? Yes. Is there a second? That was a motion to amend.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any opposition to the amendment? All right, so the amendment passes. Now let's go back to the main motion to approve the minutes of the meeting. And we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are moved and passed as amended. The next item on the agenda is the public comment, and we have Mr. John Trombold, who has signed up. Mr. Trombold, would you stand? Ah, you might want to come up to the podium up here. Mr. Trombold, we appreciate your coming and signing up for some public comment. There are, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to read it or not, but there's some parameters under which we allow public comment, and the comment has to be only on matters which are on the meeting agenda, and that's, the purpose of that is so that the trustees have an opportunity to prepare for public comment and that sort of thing. So you're limited in your comments to what's on the meeting agenda, and you're not to address subjects that are not on the agenda, and you're limited to two minutes. So just within those guidelines.
It was a strict parameters.
Yes, right.
Okay.
They are. But please, I hope you feel comfortable, and we'll comment on something, whatever your thoughts are with regard to an agenda item.
Well, I will be brief. I'd like some clarification from the Board, and in particular, I administered in some clarification from the Cooney County Reagan Republicans elected to the Board, if there are any, who have a perspective I'd like to know more about. I'm curious about their political perspective on the agenda items before them tonight. Say, the stadium would be an excellent example.
Which agenda item are you referring to?
The stadium would be a very good one. I suppose communications policy would also be another relevant agenda item. But since the Board has begun writing policy for the first time in the history of the College, I'm quite curious about the rationale and the philosophy behind this policy writing that is coming to the College from the Board. In other words, we're entering into a new era, and we deserve some further explanation and some information about the philosophy and rationales behind the policies coming our way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is celebrating success, and we have, do we have two items, or just the film?
We do. We've got celebrating success with students and international experiences, and then we've got an eight-minute clip on the aerospace program. And so, Grayden, would you like to introduce the international experience? Orlita? Okay.
I would like to first call up Peggy Wasserman and her students.
Thank you for inviting us here to speak with you today about the International Healthcare and Nursing Project, which occurred last May in Nicaragua. It was up at the Honduras border. While I talk about this project, I would like to refer you to the slides that will be shown. This was a collaborative project between North Idaho College nursing students, Lewis Clark State College nursing students, these are baccalaureate-level students mixed with our associate-degree nursing students, as well as ISLA, Interfaith Service to Latin America, which was our collaborating agency out of Minnesota. ISLA provided us all of the in-country transportation, the food, safe water, safe housing, so that as we took our students on this journey, they would have a safe return to their families. This not only was a collaborative agreement and attempt between many agencies, it also was a great deal of collaboration and participation by our community members. The eight students from Lewis Clark State College, the 12 students from North Idaho College, as well as leaders, there were a total of 24 of us, took about 20 duffel bags of equipment that we both used while we were in Nicaragua on the project, four different project goals that we set, as well as left items there so that they would have additional materials to support them in the future. One of our projects, we collaborated with nursing students from a satellite nursing school in Nicaragua. Our nursing students met with their nursing students and talked about health issues that were very common in that area. This shows you the nursing students that we brought with us in a classroom, and in the classroom you see kindergartners, first graders, and many of those kids have a big smile on their face, but what you don't see is the dental decay that occurs even at a very young age. So one of our goals was to bring toothbrushes to the area and assist the children in learning about the importance of good dental health early, so that they didn't lose their teeth early in their growth and development. This is a photograph of individuals taking blood pressures. We'd listen to blood pressure, do blood pressure screening, do heart screening and lung screening, and when we detected problems, those individuals got sent off to the community clinics. That was a new concept to the nursing students in Nicaragua that we were working with, because they tried to take care of patients when they're already sick, and there's little focus on prevention and detecting problems out in the community. So we were trying to help them evolve their practices into something that was going to prevent the problem in the first place. This is a picture of one of our nursing students and one of the nurses at the clinic or hospital, who were instrumental in some of our experiences there, and one of our nurses, or several of our nursing students, pardon me, participated in deliveries of babies. It was just a wonderful experience, and for them to be able to compare their experiences here in the United States with their experience, with the experiences in this underdeveloped country was phenomenal. And I will be asking a nursing student for her perspective on it in just a few moments. ISLA, the agency that we've worked with, has been in this area of Nicaragua for about 10 years, and as a result, has done many needs assessments. One of the needs assessments revealed that the veterans from the Contra wars and the Santa Nesta wars in the 80s and 90s, who were amputees, were not getting services provided to them. So when we went, we were equipped with 24 prosthetic feet, and we replaced 12 of them for some of the veterans who were there. This photograph shows you a nursing student who had removed a boot from one of the veteran's feet, and the foot came off with the boot. So these folks, they were using duct tape to mend them, they were using electrical tape, clear plastic tape, anything to keep them together and keep them upright. And this shows one of the happy recipients of one of the feet. This gentleman came in, again, he was either a victim of the Contra war, or after the war, many of these people were farmers, and they would be walking through, planting their crops or taking care of their cattle, and they would come across a landmine that had been planted long before, and so they would lose limbs. So this gentleman was a bilateral, above-the-knee amputee, came in with his walking crutches, and one of them had a lot of the top portion that had fallen away. And we had brought other materials for mending some of the prosthetic devices, and so one of the students worked with this gentleman and makeshifted a mend for his crutch device. Another part of our project was increasing the ability of folks to see small objects. So we went house to house, along with our blood pressure screening, and we did vision screening. The importance there is that if you're a gentleman that can't see the head of a screw or a nut or a bolt, because you need reading glasses, your life can take a serious turn, especially in that culture. So we did the reading screening, and then following the screening, we would provide reading glasses. This is an illustration of a woman who, with whom we provided reading glasses. She, to her right, there's a treadle sewing machine, which they commonly use there, and she was able to thread her sewing needle after she got her new set of glasses. And this is just an illustration of the families that we served, house to house, door to door. Many times when we went to a house, by the time we finished with that particular family, there would be a line of people outside asking for our services. So now I would like to invite comments by Katie Larson, who was one of the student participants from North Idaho College.
Hi there. This was the first time I had ever been out of the country, and on top of it, I was completely enveloped in a new culture, so it was an incredible experience. And as Peggy said, throughout our time spent there, we did various things, and probably the two things that impacted me the most had to have been observing the surgeries at the local hospital. Your initial thought when you go in was definitely not what I expected. I was actually completely impressed with their aseptic technique and the practices they followed. Aside from lacking laparoscopic technology, it was very similar to watching a surgery right in the U.S. Very impressive. But the experience that really hit home with me had to have been the door-to-door. It was very, the most rewarding. I really felt like I could help people and guide them in the right direction with their health and medical questions, but it was bittersweet, because you saw firsthand the conditions these people were living in. We would literally, myself, an interpreter, and a fellow student would walk and go to knock on a door that wasn't there, knock on the doorway, go in to this lean-to, and dirt floors, and suddenly sit down, start establishing a rapport with these people, and answering questions, and slowly see there's 13 people living under this roof, and some of them are very, very sick. And it was humbling, and it really put things into perspective for me. So whenever an opportunity comes up for people to participate in something like this, I always encourage them to go for it, because we can read about it, we can see these things on the news, but until you actually experience it, it really hits home. That's why I thank Peggy for giving me this opportunity to dig in and see this firsthand, and it really inspired me to reevaluate things throughout my life and really not take things for granted.
Thank you.
He takes out any questions?
The Board may have some questions for you. That's all right. Are there any questions or comments? Ron?
I've been blessed to travel around the world to many, many countries similar to where you've gone through, and one of the things I've always walked away from there, when you get over the shock of the conditions they live in, is, number one, is the strength of the family unit there, because they have to stand together as a family, and, second of all, is how grateful they are for the littlest things, anything that you give them. Did you experience that yourself?
Absolutely. In fact, that was some of the things that stayed with me, is if part of the family unit dropped out, hence somebody's sick, it infected everybody in that home, whether it was to or to 14 people. They were really impacted by that, and so for us to go and be able to help really, really made me feel like I did my part.
And a follow-up question to that is, did you find them to be a community of faith, that they had belief that there was something better?
Absolutely. They were very religious. I believe Catholicism was the main religion they practiced, very strong in the home and throughout the community there.
Judy?
Two questions. One is, how is the program funded, so that folks can understand what the opportunities are to participate? How is it done?
That probably is, is into me. At this point, thanks for asking that question. At this point, it has all been privately funded, although ISLA, Interfaith Service to Latin America, is a nonprofit, and so students, in order to participate, would ask their friends, their family members, to make a donation on their behalf to ISLA. And so I would collect all the checks on their behalf, and that would get sent off to ISLA as a package for that student. Some students chose to do it that way, other students chose to privately fund it and pay the whole fee themselves.
Which would be about how much?
It was about $2,300, which included all the, everything relating to Nicaragua, the airfare, passports, immunizations, everything, the package, which is not a small amount of money, and we are very aware of that, especially in this climate that we're in now. The students that participated felt like this was a, this could be a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and they wanted that broad cultural experience and to gain more cultural competence, especially because in healthcare, that is becoming more and more and more a necessity, as well as being able to experience the other things that we experienced.
And for how long were you actually?
It was 11 days, thanks.
11 days, including travel?
Correct.
Okay. And of course, the other question is language. How'd you do on?
We had interpreters to, we usually had one interpreter to every two students, and some of our students spoke some Spanish, which improved greatly while we were there. And there was a lot of body language.
Cut.
Looked like maybe I saw a dorm on the photo. Did you guys stay together for meals and that, or did you end up with host families and get out into the community? How did that work for the interaction, to participate in their culture and just get to know them that way?
We stayed in dorms. My number-one goal is to keep these students safe, to bring them back to their families and to their homes in the same condition that they left in. So because of that, we chose not to do host families housing, which is similar to what you're talking about. We stayed in a, it was similar to a dorm setting, although they weren't, they were three people per room, and we ate together, so by the end, we were pretty much a family.
And I think probably you're going to find is you can never bring a child or a student back in the same condition you sent them, because they'll never, they'll never be the same after they've seen that, so.
Totally.
Thank you for what you do. That's incredible.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And before you sit down, let me just thank you, and your entire group that went down there on behalf of the Board of Trustees and NIC. I mean, you're not just taking your students down there and acquainting them and giving them invaluable education, but you're carrying messages from the United States and from our community, and we are indebted to you for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Muchos gracias.
Now I'd like to invite up Scott Estes to also speak about international experience.
Oh, there we go. All right. Good evening. My name is Scott Estes. I'm one of the two Spanish instructors here at NIC. This past May, I had the privilege and opportunity of taking 19 students to Antigua, Guatemala, for a two-week intensive study abroad experience. Antigua, it's a city with a rich history. It essentially was the capital of colonial Central America. That, and also the nature of the Spanish spoken there, very clear Spanish, makes it an ideal place for students to go. So there have been trips in the past. This trip was different in the fact that we set it up so students had the option of receiving NIC credit by taking one of our foreign language culture classes. And so we had about half of the group that opted for that. The nice thing about that is also that they were eligible, most were eligible for financial aid, which helped a lot. It is a relatively inexpensive trip, but when you're a poor student, everybody helps. So we, each student stayed with a host family, a local Guatemalan family. In the school, consisted of four hours per day, one-on-one individual instruction, plus, which included excursions in the afternoon, different cultural activities, and a weekend trip. I think this is, I mean, as a whole, the group represented NIC very well. I consider it a very successful trip. I did bring just a few, I know we're limited on time, I did bring just a couple pictures here. You can see it, this is the day after we arrived, this is most of the group, minus one, kind of a very popular hike overlooking the city. So everybody's still sort of getting their bearings at this point, taking in everything. And this, sort of the iconic picture of the city, beautiful street with the arch. Guatemala is surrounded by volcanoes. There are 33 active volcanoes in Guatemala, so we made it out alive, thankfully. And then also, this happened to be our last day at school, taken, I mean, the school that we partnered with down there is one of the oldest and most reputable schools there. The teachers, I mean, everybody had just a wonderful experience there. So this is all of the students from NIC, plus with their individual instructors. And I'd just like to say, this is, as an language instructor, this is one of the most rewarding experiences that I can have, being able to introduce. I mean, it's one thing to talk about the culture, and you can only do so much, you know, four or five hours a week, but being able to introduce students to a culture, and then actually being able to see my students, sort of that light goes off. You know, they're using, they're forced, they're put on the spot and forced to use the language immediately, which sometimes can be a stressful experience, but I saw a lot of growth, and just to see the enthusiasm and excitement was very rewarding. So I brought three students just to share a little bit about their experiences and...
Could you introduce them to us?
Yeah. This is Tammy Joffe, Monica Lebsock, and then Corinne Reddy.
Good evening.
Or in front of the microphone. That'd be great.
Over here.
Yeah.
I noticed the culture right off the bat, right when you're just driving in the bus, you can see that you're not in Kansas anymore at all. You know, people with great big machine guns guarding a gas station or a grocery store. The poverty there really hit me. I wanted to come home in about a week. I didn't think the second week was going to go well, just even the dogs broke my heart on the street, and seeing all the little children selling their stuff. And like what you said, with the Nicaragua, you could see the families, they all worked hard. They all, they all did their part to make sure their families were fed. You know, children weren't going to school because they had to work in the parks, and it was just really, really sad. I wanted my children to go down there and see, you know, they're pretty lucky up here. And just learning the cultural, everything there, instead of from a book, was amazing. Getting to go on the field trips to the coffee plantation was really cool, because I didn't realize what was, had to do with just coffee, and that's something that they do, they're lifelong farmers, and getting to live with my family, it was hard leaving. My family all played in a band, and we all became groupies. We followed them to all of their coffee houses and their little lounges and listened to them play their music every night, but you became part of their family, and they helped me out a lot with my Spanish, and I still communicate with them on Facebook today in Spanish. It was just a great experience that I hope everybody else can do again, and he was a great guide and kept us safe and made sure we were all okay, and it was good.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica. This was my first time ever traveling abroad, traveling at all, and I've finished five years of Spanish, and so I got, I was like, you know, learning the grammar over and over again, but then like I finally got to sit down with an instructor who didn't speak any English whatsoever, and so that really forced you to speak Spanish, and, you know, by the second week, it started flowing. I think for all of us, we learned so much Spanish, we could go out, speak it with anybody, speak it with our families, living with the host families, like speaking Spanish over dinner, it was just amazing, and so learning the language was just a huge change for me. And also, like both Scott and Tammy said, the culture was just like a completely different world, and the people are so different, you know, everything's so different, and like I've never seen anything like it, and it really like triggered a desire in me and like other students to go out and see what's out there in the world and study abroad. And so I'm really thankful for the opportunity that we were given, so, yeah.
Hello. Well, I'll tell you, the best way to learn a language is to get thrown right into it with Spanish teachers that don't speak English, or won't speak English, I should say. I really lucked out with my host family, because they were amazing, and they're a very tight-knit group. They welcomed me like I was family, they fed me very well, and I lucked out on that too. And it was just a great experience, is one of the best experiences of my life, having a teacher, and we kept the same teacher every day, so they really worked with us in our weaknesses and our strengths, and by the end of the first week, it just clicked in me, and all of a sudden, I was fluently speaking Spanish with the family, and they were sitting there with their mouths open, and they were like, whoa, what happened to you? I was like, I don't know, it just happened, it was magic. Or a lot of studying, either way. But it was one of the best experiences of my life, and I wouldn't trade it for anything, and I hope to have more of those.
There might be some questions or comments from the Board. Kristi?
Well, this just shows the Board how lucky we are, have such quality faculty and students at this institution, and that you're our ambassadors that go forward and represent us is fabulous, too. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Before you sit down, I would like to make this comment. My wife and I have been the host of five exchange students over the years, and I want to thank you for doing what you did, because when we first had an exchange student, we thought we were doing something for them, but it was amazing what they did for us.
Sure, why not?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Now, as part of the celebrating success, we also have a short, I think seven or eight-minute film on the aerospace program.
Welcome to Invest Northwest once again. I'm Sean Alsley, while major grant in aerospace, a lot happening in our region. And this morning, my guest, happy to have her here, Cassie, Host Director of Aerospace and Outreach for North Idaho College. Cassie, thanks for being here on the program.
Thank you. Appreciate being here.
You know, this story came on our radar here on Invest Northwest because of a major grant. If you can, talk about that and what that allows you to do in your position.
Oh, thank you. Well, back in 2012, North Idaho College received about $2.97 million to develop Aerospace Technology Center of Excellence. And so it involved two pathways of either advanced manufacturing or aviation maintenance. So under the advanced manufacturing, we're doing composite technology, machining, a little quality assurance, and NDT. This got huge support from our industry partners in the northern region of Idaho, because there are about 34 companies that either directly or indirectly produce something for the aerospace industry, Boeing and all that. So they were looking for a skilled workforce. They wrote huge letters of support, said, bring it on, we're ready to hire. So I came on board, and we've been moving very quickly to get our first class up by August. They'll be doing composite technology, and we're retrofitting a building off the Coeur d'Alene Airport, and, and then hopefully come January, we'll be bringing the rest of the manufacturing certificates and machining and aviation maintenance around and get everything up in the next year, so.
The projections, according to the information that I received before our interview, NIC expected to create 520 new jobs by 2015 with the addition of an aerospace center in Hayden. Classes for the center, like you said, are on track.
Yes.
As we head into the school year. If you can, big picture, the aerospace industry as a whole, and the guests that I've had on, the leaders in the industry that I've had here on the program in the past, say right now, business is very strong in this particular sector. So you're talking about taking young minds, intelligent minds, and training them to go out and land what are good-paying jobs that are available right now.
Are available, absolutely. 500 jobs, and our latest projections are more like 600 jobs. We've been taking the tempo out there and the pulse of the industry. Our, our partners are looking at major contracts that they're holding off on accepting, because they're waiting for this workforce to come through. So absolutely, a big momentum and a good place for us to be right now.
All right. You said you have been working feverishly to get everything ready as the students come onboard and they get entrenched in this. What will it be like? Walk it, walk us through it. Paint a picture for our viewers of what it'll be like.
Oh, my goodness. Well, first, let me give a shout out to NIC and the, and the college community and what they've done to support what typically takes a couple of years to get a program up and going, and they've done it in about six months. What it'll look like is, we'll have a building that'll have classrooms in, in composite technology, let's see, airframe, just the latest, greatest of all the machines from, from five-axis cutting machines and, and we've even got a donation from Lockheed Martin Space Division. We have some of the latest, greatest composite technology materials to work on. So students will, will be embraced in every skillset needed from assembling to repair come August. We, we are so full, we have such a waiting list already, that we're starting a morning and an evening cohort to get things up and going, and we've already got a waiting list of about 50 people for January. So they recognize the, the jobs that are out there, they recognize that this is a skillset that's immersing, you know, I'm hearing even cars are going to be made out of composite materials, fire, air tanks on the back of firefighters. We have industry partners in Kellogg that are making piping out of composite materials. So it, it seems to be anything that's metal now is going to be composite. It's lighter, it's stronger, it's the wave of the future, and, and our, our students recognize that this is a good place to be, a great program to get into, and, and a wonderful job opportunity. And what a huge economic impact it's going to have on our region, it's wonderful.
A major driver of the economy, especially in that sector. Cassie, I know you, I used to work over here at the community colleges in Spokane, now you're over in North Idaho. If you can, you're, you've done so much work to get this up and get this off the ground. You have the foundation, you have the composite materials to work with. They learn the skillset they need to land good-paying jobs that are available in the community. Five years from now, 10 years from now, where do you take this? How does this elevate? How does it expand?
Well, that's a good question. I, I think it's, there's endless opportunities where we can take this. The, I think the industry is just going to keep getting larger and, and demand new skills and, and new training for students. And, and having a brand-new facility with such industry input and support of our community, I think they're going to drive us into that future. So it's kind of hard for me to say where that'll be, but, you know, we're talking about 3D printing, I mean, there's, there's so many opportunities around what's coming our way in the advanced manufacturing. The aviation maintenance part of it is, is really driven by the FAA. They, they put a set of standards out there, a set of curriculum, and, and we don't get to deviate from that. But on that other side, on the advanced manufacturing, I think staying on top of, of where that industry's going and talking to our community partners and saying, is this what you're looking for? You know, we've even had the conversation of helicopters. I mean, so many people are reaching out and saying, you have this Center of Excellence, and we, we see that we'd like to go this direction, well, do you think you'll be able to provide that workforce for us? I think just communicate it. We're a community college, so I think we need to just serve our community.
So if there's somebody that's watching, you mentioned there's a waiting list, what do you recommend to somebody? I know that's the million-dollar question.
Yeah.
Is it something that it's, it's worth the wait if you have to get down the line?
It is worth the wait, yeah.
Just kind of be persistent?
Worth the wait. Get in touch with us. We have the nic.edu website, you can look for aerospace technology, go straight to us, contact information. The way we're putting the program together, we're going to find a way to serve all those students that want to be served. We're going to open up more sections. The grant certainly would like us to ring the bell on as many completers and, and put them to work. That's the other thing, I probably forgot to mention, that these TAC grants come with what I call a navigator. We have a recruiter out there recruiting students, following them through the program, getting them any resources they need to be successful, and then placing them in jobs. I mean, I don't know a whole lot of programs where you say, hey, if you go through, I got somebody to help find you a job at the end. So come on in, get on that list, we're going to open the doors and find a way to serve you, yeah.
So incredible information. Thanks for being our guest here at Invest Northwest. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Sean.
Thank you. Good to have you here.
All right. Thank you for everybody that contributed to that celebrating success. That was really kind of a very moving presentation today from everybody. Our next agenda item is our constituent reports, and the first one up is ASNC and Benaya.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairman Howard, the board, Dr. Dunlap, Mr. Lyons, my fellow constituents, and all the esteemed guests. It's, it's good to see everyone here, and as we can see, we've started the year, and we've kind of stopped jogging over the summer, and now we're sprinting full speed ahead. And we all have a lot going on. And as a representative of the students, I just want to say that it's good to have begun the year and get things going, and transition from our summer schedules into our school schedules. We have some summer highlights for you from some of our ASNC representatives. We sent two or three representatives, three of our senators, to a student leadership conference in Golden, Colorado. It was a National Association for Campus Activities called NACA, and that was on July 11th through the 14th. We sent James Durham, Richard Fortman, and Alex Rodal Cubius, and they went to the Colorado School of Mines, and that is the college that hosted them. They stayed there in the dorms and participated in a few days of student leadership and different activities, individual and team-building skills. And they came back with a lot of great ideas to bring to the table. Myself and our vice president here, Joshua Brands, went to Laverne, California for an ILEAD conference. ILEAD stands for Institute for Leadership and Educational Development. I brought a t-shirt from there to show you all. So that's just one of my memoirs, one of my pieces of apparel to keep in my memory the great experience I had there. And I'm sure Joshua can attest as well to all the skills that we learned. We learned not only what it takes to be a good leader, but we learned a lot about ourselves and who we are as leaders. And I know I benefited greatly from being sent to that conference, that institute, and I just want to thank ASNC, thank NIC as a whole, for providing opportunities for us student leaders to, to go to these conferences and participate. Last Friday, we had a rafting trip with the Outdoor Pursuits Program with student government representatives, student events representatives, ORS leaders, and residence hall RAs. And there was 40 people total on that trip, and we had a blast. We went over to St. Regis, Montana, passed the Clark Fork there, and rafted, and I've never been rafting before, so it was a great experience. Just want to thank Outdoor Pursuits for that. I just want to emphasize that we're really excited to begin the school year, and we have a lot of tasks, a lot of responsibilities to issue out amongst ourselves as the student government board, and I'm sure you all do as well as the board trustees, administration, faculty, and staff. So it's going to be interesting to see what this year entails. Currently, for ASNC, we are looking at appointing a new senator. One of our senators could not continue over the summer, so we're looking to fill that position. We've interviewed several people this week, and we'll be appointing that position at the beginning of next week. So by next month, we'll have a new face on our team. We're also looking to appoint next week our Senator Pro Tempore, and that position has the responsibility of filling in for myself, the President, or Joshua Brands, our Vice President in their absence, as well as reviewing our constitution. So that's an important position that we will be appointing through ASNC Student Government. And that concludes my report. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Benaya, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next reporter is the staff assembly, Nancy Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman Howard, Board of Trustees members, and President Dunlap. Some people think that summer at NIC is a nice, quiet, relaxing place to be. Well, while it is true that a number of the students and faculty dwindle during the summer, most staff members are here catching up on things left over from spring semester, supporting students and programs during the summer semester, and getting ready for the mad rush of fall semester. One major program over the summer that many staff members participated in is ORS, Orientation, Advising, and Registration Sessions. Eight sessions were held throughout the summer here on the main campus, as well as one session held in Sandpoint. Approximately 1,200 students to part in ORS. They met with advisors, members of the registrar's, financial aid, and student accounts offices, who helped them register for class, answer questions, and generally help them head in the right direction of being a successful NIC student. In addition, ORS 2 is a program that has been developed and is available this fall for those students who completed one of the summer ORS sessions. This will be a 55-minute presentation that provides the student with additional information and resources for their academic success here at NIC. So ready or not, school has begun. We look forward to once again having a great semester with students, faculty, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you. I, I did have a question or a comment. I wanted to thank you. We have a tendency to use acronyms all the time and never explain what they are, and so when you explain what ORS is, and there is a wider audience that is sitting in this room, that's helpful to everybody, and I want to thank you very much for that. I don't know, a year or two ago, I was probably asking questions every third sentence, trying to get an understanding of what the acronym was. So I appreciate your, your being considerate. Thank you. Our next report is from Michelle Libbert.
Thank you, Chairman Howard, trustees, President Dunlap. As you said at the beginning, Chairman Howard, we're back. After years of continued growth, this semester's beginning was certainly a different experience for us. I'd really like to commend the work of our division chairs and our administrative assistants. These last two weeks, they were faced with the difficult task of deciding which courses to cut, rearranging schedules, and notifying instructors that their classes were canceled. They had a very, they had a very difficult two weeks. They probably deserved chocolate and flowers. The assembly will be meeting for this first time on September 12th. One of the first things we'll be considering is the new RIF policy that you have proposed. We will examine that and send our recommendations on that to the college senate. Last spring, we agreed to resurrect the faculty brag sheet. This will be a website to, for faculty to share their achievements and their contributions to the community, as well as to the college. In preparation for this, I asked the faculty to share any professional development, achievements, or community activities that they participated in over the summer. Here's a sampling of some of these activities. History instructor James Jewels has a chapter in a new book called Unifying America: Western Perspectives on the American Civil War. Other contributing authors include historians from Princeton, Harvard, USC, and other distinguished universities. I'm going to be buying that book and asking for an autograph. Yoga instructors Terry Simmons and Jennifer Harbor gained the highest level of teaching credentials granted to yoga instructors. Physical education instructor Paul Mazzardo coached his son's U-12 Coeur d'Alene All-Star Little League team. They run District One Championship, the state championship, and represented Idaho in the Western Regionals. Education instructor Gail Ballard coordinated the Region One STEM Summer Conference, hosted here at NIC. It provided over 125 Idaho K-12 teachers with ongoing resources and professional development. Basketball coaches and PE instructors Chris and Carrie Carlson coached the North Idaho Elite Girls Basketball Teams to several highly competitive tournaments in May and July, including the prestigious End of the Trail Tournament in Oregon City. This team consisted of eighth, ninth, and 10th graders from middle schools and high schools in North Idaho. Physical education instructor Dell Eber, Eberwin? I'm not sure how to pronounce his name. Finalized his book with Nova Science Publishers, The Learning System for Education: Systematic Research on Creative Technology in Classroom Practice. This will be published in mid-September. And because he's kind of an overachiever, he also completed his doctorate degree this summer. English instructors Molly Mashad and Laura Godfrey have formed NIC's first-ever English club. Their mission is to inspire students and surrounding community to further appreciate and cultivate their love for language and literature. Laura Godfrey also has had an essay accepted for inclusion in the upcoming book titled Teaching Hemingway and the Nat, and the Natural World. Art instructor Ally Voat showcased her work at the Yunk, the Gonzaga Art Gallery. For the fourth summer in a row, anthropology instructor Ola Moody has been the city of Tico's archaeologist, working on sewer and water construction projects. She did say they found nothing, nothing interesting this summer, but last year, they found a mammoth's tooth. Early childhood development instructor Leslie Schlock is currently serving as the Board President of the Panhandle Autism Society. She and NIC are forming an NIC club... She and NIC are forming an NIC club that focuses on autism. Sociology instructor Kathy Matrice attended a six-day sustainability conference in Portland. Sociology instructor Maureen Steinel attended the annual meeting for the American Sociological Association. Photography instructor Phil Corliss continued his service as a director of the Pacific Northwest Great Teachers Seminar. Early childhood instructor and division chair Carol Lindsay earned her PhD from University of Idaho. Communications instructor Josh Meisner earned his PhD from Gonzaga University. We will be setting up a website where faculty can list their achievements and their contributions to the community, and as soon as that's set up, I will get you the link.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Michelle, thank you very much. Audrey, you're up.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, members of the board, President Dunlap. Tomorrow will be the first meeting of College Senate, and although I would love to hold it on the beach like we did for our first meeting last year, I know it's not going to happen. We've got a lot on our plate. In fact, for our first meeting, we will elect new officers. We will be discussing two new proposed committees, the Safety Advisory Committee and the NIC Children's Center Advisory Committee, was put forth from Graydon Stanley's office. And then, last but not least, we will be discussing the Reduction in Force Policy and Procedure. As usual, we have a wonderful, wonderful group of individuals on Senate who anticipate to share in our shared governance system, and luckily, we are ready to hit the ground running. So, with that being said, the next time that I meet with you, I will be sure to share with you the outcome of that meeting. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Audrey, thank you very much. We now have the President's report, President Joe Donlap.
Chairman Howard, trustees, and NIC colleagues, good evening. I'm going to try and keep my report relatively brief tonight because we do have the recommendations for the sports complex to go over in just a little bit. But as you have heard, we are off to a running start this year. There's a new sense of reinvigoration on campus. There's a lot of excitement, and for me, the pace, as well as others, has done nothing but continued to pick up. Last year, or last week, faculty came back, and we had a great time last week with workshops that included things such as emergency planning, financial aid procedures, how we work with students in terms of their financial planning, and supervisory responsibilities. And then this week, the students came back, and we've had a great time with some barbecues and some special events for the students, and we're certainly glad to have them here because after all, that is why we're here, and it gives a great sense of excitement and actually makes people like myself feel younger, so it's good to have everybody here. I'm going to have Graydon talk briefly about enrollment. Our enrollment is down, and I wanted Graydon to give a perspective of what's happening nationwide and within the state as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap, and other guests. I wish the news that I was bringing to you was a little bit better, but it's certainly consistent with what we see happening nationally, regionally, and locally. Should tell you right at this time that our enrollment is just a bit over 11% down compared to the same date last year. There are a number of events that will occur over the course of the next couple of weeks that may have some impact on that, including at the end of the day today and then process tomorrow is the drop for non-payment. Those students who may have been enrolled, planned on attending, but don't have the resources to be able to continue, so that will have some effect, as it always does, on our enrollment. Last year, in fact, by utilizing the text messaging to students, we actually improved our numbers through that process and doing a better job communicating, getting more of the students in in time to pay and stay in school. So we hope that through using that same method, actually, we can affect numbers favorably that way. We also have, next week is when we do our attendance-taking, finding out who's actually in those seats, and then on September 10th, we have the drop for non-attendance. There may be some of the students who just haven't shown up in class. Faculty are asked to record that, report that, and then on September 10th, we'll have that drop for non-attendance. Officially, our enrollment figures don't have to be reported until October 15th. You might recall in the past, it was the 10th day of classes. The state changed that last year, and so our official numbers will come to you and to the public on October 15th. We will have a better sense, though, with these couple of dates in front of us, as to what our enrollment is for fall semester at the September board meeting, so I'll be reporting that to you at that time after we've passed some of these milestones. A couple of things to note about enrollment as we look at the trends is, in fact, we are up in professional technical enrollment. If you looked at the data that's available there, we're down in the other areas. Last year at this time, we had 821 PTE students. As of today, that number's 995, and so we're up considerably in the PTE area. We don't have waiting lists in many of those programs, but we are up in that area. In all the other areas, we're generally down, so that's the one exception that I certainly want to note to you, and it's consistent with some of the information we've been operating with over the last two or three years. Some of that growth in PTE certainly comes from the aviation program that you heard about tonight. Increases also in second-year students in computer information technology, welding, diesel mechanics, and machine technology programs. I should tell you about other comparisons. Nationally, as we looked at some of the data, we see that colleges and universities across the nation are looking between 3% and 5% down. Most of that information on the 3% to 5% is coming from universities. Most of the national information talks about proprietary schools and community colleges being the ones who will experience the biggest declines in enrollment because those are the institutions who are typically preparing students for most immediate employment. As the economy improves and employment's available, we're the ones who are most often affected by that, those proprietary schools and community colleges. If we look locally and talking to a number of those, our colleagues around the area here, College of Southern Idaho right now is 9.2% down. They've been anywhere from about 9% to 13% over the last few weeks. They're about 9.2% down, and they're down across the board. Their PTE enrollment is down as well. They've had a major employer in Shabana Yogurt come to that area that they suspect has employed a number of those students that might be otherwise involved in professional technical education. A real surprise, I think, to most everyone, and particularly those folks working at the College of Western Idaho, they've had such incredible growth. I think you know that they've been the fastest-growing community college in the nation, and probably six weeks ago, they were anywhere from 7% to 10% up, which was contrary to stats at all other colleges. That has come down to the point that as of today, they were about flat in enrollment. And so they're quite concerned about that, that they were certainly hoping for an increase, anticipating that, given their market position in the Treasure Valley, and they're flat at this point. If we look at, in conversations we had today with the Spokane area community colleges, most of them are around the 5% decline in enrollment. These are all a bit premature for some of those schools that haven't actually started classes yet. Spokane Community College is at least a week out and has orientations next week. Lewis Clark State University is approximately 4% down. University of Idaho is 4% to 5% down, and so we're fairly consistent with the other institutions. It's not great news. We're proud of our staff and the work that they've done over the last month. You heard about the ORS program tonight, and part of what wasn't said is we kept adding sessions to accommodate as many students as possible, reaching out to all of those who hadn't completed processes, inviting them in, and so we did everything we could to get people in the front door here. We're really focused now on taking the students who are enrolled, keeping them here, helping them be successful, retaining them, and working with them toward completion. So that's the information I'm glad to share with the board this evening.
Thank you, Graydon.
May I ask a question? Sir?
Sure.
Go ahead. Graydon, for clarification, because I'm not sure I understand, when you said that people will be dropped for non-attendance, does that mean they just never showed up at all? Is that kind of how that works, and you give them so many days, and if you never see them, then, okay. So I mean, once they get there, if they showed up once, then through the rest of the semester, they could show up as little or as much as they want, but for this initial...
You know, the reason we do that, certainly, one is to create seats for students who would like to be in those classes. Even more importantly, as we've talked about the management of student debt, we've had students in the past, before we enacted this policy, who would either, at the end of the semester, having never filled the seat, give an F because they never showed up, or be dropped at such a late date that they still incurred that debt. They're responsible for any financial aid, any amount that they owe the institution. Now, within that first two weeks, if we can drop them because they're not there, they don't incur that debt. We can take care of it before that happens.
Any other questions? Go ahead, please.
Clearly, the impact of enrollment decline will affect our budget, and we've already begun the conversation about how we will reduce our budgets. And at the next board meeting, I will give you a final report on the strategies that we will implement so that the budget matches the revenues. But as a precursor to that, I would ask Lita to report out on how, within instruction, we either expand or contract based on our enrollment, which impacts our budget, particularly with our adjuncts. So, Lita?
Chair Howard, members of the board, the Office of Instruction and the 10 Division it represents have been working diligently to respond to the enrollment of Fall 2013. The goal is always to have the courses available that students need, and the courses' fill rates to be as high as they possibly can be. So to that end, the following is a synopsis of the classes that we have canceled, added, merged, and increased in size to accommodate this need. We have canceled 86 sections, decreasing seats available by about 1,574. We've added 24 sections of core courses, courses like English 099, English 101, Psych 101, Com 101, Math 025, Math 108, adding a total of about 510 seats. The addition of these 24 sections helps provide space for students who are entering college as first-time students. We've also merged six sections, eliminating approximately 127 seats. While we eliminated some seats, what we did by merging courses was to allow those fill rates to be higher, decreasing the need for two sections to faculty. We added about 189 seats to existing sections, expanding those sections beyond normal capacity. So in this case, a cap rate might have been set at 30, and we increased it to 35, again, the most economical way probably to add seats without adding cost to the institution. Do you have any questions?
Any questions on Lita's report? Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Also, we've had some unexpected growth in areas, and one area in which success begets success that I'd like to point out is that, as you're aware, our wrestling team won the national championship last year. We award 16 athletic scholarships for wrestling per year. This year, we had 62 wrestlers come to North Idaho College to try out for the team and to sign up as a student, and that is an increase from 44 that we had last year. And so we have these areas of success that become magnets, and I think we even have one student who came all the way from Illinois, paying his full way without a state tuition, just to try out for the wrestling team. So we're very proud of the different areas on campus, but I thought that example was worth noting. We are in the final throes of the interview process for the Dean of General Studies. Tomorrow, we will have our final candidate here on campus for the interview and for the open forums, and then the screening committee will meet, deliberate, and then make some recommendations, and so hopefully, next week, we will have a decision on the hire for that position. The last thing I want to report out on, excuse me, is that over the course of the summer, we were informed by the Albertson's Foundation that our proposal that was submitted in conjunction with the Forrest Byrd Charter School in Sandpoint was accepted, and collectively, we had submitted a proposal for $5 million to put in place what the Albertson's Foundation calls the PTEC model. And it's not unlike the KTEC model we have, only the PTEC model is primarily online and expands educational opportunities in career and technical programs through an online format to rural communities. And we will be partnering with the Charter Byrd Academy with our aerospace program, and so that gives us an opportunity to put online a number of our aerospace programs, set up a feeder system so that those students can achieve credentials or an AA degree, and then come into our aerospace programs. Between now and the end of December, the Albertson's Foundation will be continuing to fund planning for that project that will go statewide, and then in January, that project will go statewide and be offered to a wide variety of schools. And in case you wonder what PTEC stands for, it's Pathways in Technology, Early College, High School. And the types of programs will include manufacturing, healthcare, and information technology. And so I would like to commend Sarah Flayland from our foundation office, who helped put together that grant, and Cassie Silves, who also worked on that and was very successful. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Any questions? President Dunlap? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Our next agenda item is old business. There is no old business, at least none we're going to be dealing with today. On the new business tab, we have a lease arrangement for the welding facility, Mark Lyons.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap, this is a request for the board to approve a renegotiated lease for the welding facility. Any substantive questions regarding the details are probably not best directed at me, but probably to Vice President Dorn. But the point of this is that we have renegotiated this lease. This is the same facility area that the welding facility has been using. We renegotiated the lease to give us three years. It's anticipated that at some point within that period, the facility will be moved, and we—the lease does contain flexibility to either continue the lease for three years or to move on short notice. So really, at this point, unless there are any questions, we're requesting that the board approve by motion the lease as renegotiated and authorize the board chair to execute the lease on behalf of the college.
Judy?
Question mark on the lease, page 2, assignability, last paragraph. I always have trouble with legal language here. This says, "The lease may not be assigned without first obtaining written consent unless the—which consent shall be unreasonably withheld or shall not be reasonably upheld."
Nice to point that out at this point.
I always have to practice.
The reality is...
Unreasonably withheld.
That's a good catch on that. The reality on this lease is there will be no assignability. There's no—nothing is contemplated. Our role in this, when we get to the point where we're ready to move, we would terminate the lease on 60-day notice. So, good point.
Okay.
Judy?
No, my question's answered. Thank you.
Mark, AutoTech has completed architectural and is in the process of building a new building. Will this—they're working around this current facilities and won't disrupt that at all?
Well, one of the things that was done as part of the negotiation of this lease was to survey the property. AutoTech had—did combine two lots on this so that they could build their facility, and so we had the... so we had the property that was to be leased surveyed so we could define what our area was, what the leasehold footprint would be. Yes, they do plan on eventually expanding, they do want to move into this area. They were also supportive of NIC moving out when NIC is able to do so, and I think that's, both sides are in agreement on that. It's just a matter of how, when within the three-year window, NIC will be prepared to move the welding facility.
Todd?
Two questions, just for comparative purposes. I see that the contract's for three years, and I see the rate at sixteen-twenty-five a month. I'm curious, what was the length of the previous lease, and how does this rate compare to what we were paying previously?
My recollection is that the previous lease was a five-year lease, and it had, it had some options to renew. AutoTech wanted some flexibility to shorten that time period up, and they also encouraged NIC, or supported NIC's desire to be able to move the facility on shorter notice. So frankly, we can keep the lease for three years. The information that we have is that we fully expect to be out of that facility within that three-year period, so we have what we thought was basically the best of both worlds.
How did the rate come out compared to where we were? Did it go up a little bit, or stay the same, or go down?
I don't remember. Ron, do you recollect?
Stayed the same.
Rate stayed the same?
Rate stayed the same.
Thank you, sir. Sounds good.
Judy?
Just clarification for those who don't have in front of them the word. When I first heard you talk about it, I thought it was AutoTech, which is having to do with automobiles. It's a company called AutoTech? AutoTech, right? And this has to do with welding?
No, AutoTech is a major fabrication company offshore that bought out EPI, which is now under the name of AutoTech USA, which means they're an international-based company.
The earlier leases were with the prior owner of the property.
Right.
AutoTech is the new owners of the property.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the lease?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we signed this lease as proposed under the contract terms.
I'll second that.
Second?
I'll second that.
And that's with the amendment of putting no in there? Is there a no that needs to be inserted in there?
Well, we can make a technical correction of that, yes.
Right.
We'll interliniate that.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Mark? I'm going to exercise a board prerogative, unless there's serious objection, and just move the next, the third item up. We have an item to move our October meeting from October 23rd to October 30th because we have some conflicts with some scheduling of a number of the participants here. Do we have a motion to move that meeting from the 23rd to the 30th?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion because then we need to be sure to discuss if that deed worked, right? So, I move that we move the regularly scheduled October board meeting from the 23rd to October 30th.
Second? Any discussion on that move?
Everybody can attend, listen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, let's go back to Tab 2, and this tab is to discuss Policy 2.01.05, and it's attached, and the title, the specific area, is Communication with Board of Trustees. And Todd, you had requested this, and so I'm going to let you kind of take the lead on this.
All right. One of the things that we've been doing is talking about various policies and procedures, and in fact, hired an individual by the name of Jim Perez, who's looked at all the policies and actually given us a report back of those that he would like to see us review. In light of that, President Dunlap has put together a program, believed by December, to have inputs on all the different policies as we review them. And this was one of the ones that I thought might be appropriate to move up a little bit to the head of the line. It was originally, if you notice, dated 1993, updated in '09, under a former President Bell. And I think there's a perception that this policy was, was put in place, and it may be, it's a negative perception of the purpose of the policy and how it's been applied. And I think we have a new administration, new leadership, and I don't think we need to constrict communication or control the communication as some may have felt they needed to in the past. I think that as elected officials, the trustees, that we should be approachable by all the folks that are, that we represent, faculty, staff, students. And I think that there's a chilling effect that this procedure has regarding communication. The other issue that I have, and you, and I've talked with some of the board members and we've discussed it, is that there can be a concern sometimes if you are trying to communicate, that there needs to be another avenue besides the formal chain of command. Being a former military officer, I have a strong appreciation for the chain of command, but in those instances, we also had the IG as kind of an honest third-party broker. In some capacity, someone might have it as an ombudsman. I would like to strike the policy as it currently is, and then as part of President Dunlap's review, maybe it can be rewritten with the proviso of having that type of third-party that if, if a person feels that they're not able to work within the chain of command, even in what I would call a whistleblower situation for fear of retaliation or whatever, that we have that in place, and then we could reincorporate a policy that I think could work better.
Do you have a motion you want us to consider?
I do. My motion is to, is to strike that policy at this time.
So, the motion is to strike Policy 2.01.05?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to the motion?
This discussions?
If we get a second, then we get a discussion.
So, the only way I can have a discussion is to second it?
Right.
Well, let me, let me second it then, and then we can have a discussion.
Exactly.
Is that fine?
Yeah, I mean, the reason for that is to make sure that there's some support for a discussion, not necessarily you don't have to, doesn't mean you have to vote for or against it, but it allows us to have a discussion.
Okay, I, time for a discussion now?
Yes.
Phew, thank you.
Did you, did you have, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, no, I just, is, is, Todd, you, you put in there is that we're going through reviewing policies and procedures, and this is one that you wanted to highlight, and I think that that's a great conversation to have, but for us to circumvent that process that Mr. Dunlap's going through right now, I think that this would probably be redundant if there, that it's deemed appropriate that we need to make some recommendations. So, I'm just asking why that, with the original proposal that we were going to review these and suggested this go in front, and then now you want to, you want to amend this now before we review that, so.
For me, it's a, it's a timeline issue. There are some things that I think would be appropriate to address rather than putting them off, and I think right now, under the current environment, there are, there are some concerns and some inability for people to be candid and to come forward and to provide information, and I think some people are feeling stifled in their ability to communicate, and so I'm trying to remove that, that veil, that, that fear, that threat that they feel is over them. I think this policy was used, maybe even punitively in some ways, under the former administration, and maybe some of those memories are still there, still strong, even though I know, I don't think Joe intends to use it in that context, but I think just the fear, the pure existence of this chills communication and is not allowing us to, to get information that should be available to us. And I think there's a perception that people can't talk to us.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Todd, I've always, I've been with the board now since 2004. I've always experienced open, honest communication on this campus. I've never had an employee tell me that they couldn't go to their proper channels and speak to anyone. I think it's dangerous territory for a board member to wade in and, and try to maybe be part of a chain of command when that's just not our role, our role as governance and policymakers. I, I don't think it's, it's healthy to do that, to go that direction. This policy is a good guidance for us to remind board members what our role is, and I think that there, people will come to us regardless, people will come, whether it's community members, which is completely appropriate, to tell us what, if they have issues or concerns with NIC. What's always mattered is what we do with that information and how we handle it, and as long as we as board members understand the process very clearly, and policy helps us do that, then we can go no wrong. But when we start thinking that maybe one individual board member could take an issue and now start going a direction with it, and it just upsets the apple cart completely. We have great procedures and policy in place for anyone on this campus to go straight to their supervisor, and from there, if there's no satisfaction, they go to the next level, and just like any chain of command that you're used to. And so, outside of having no review done at this time, I would never support just striking a policy without another one in place. We need to have a policy in place on communications.
Any other comments? Judy?
Just thinking, I think most of the folk here on campus have access to this policy. It's available to everybody now.
It's online.
And so, it's online for the public who may be watching tonight, learning with us about the role we board members see of being sure that we're accessible to everybody. As Christie pointed out, and Todd, I think we're all struggling with the times that we have information, that what do we do with it, sort of thing, because we all care, that's why we're here on the board. And so, this policy does help us as trustees say to folks who have an issue, there is a system to share that information. And I think you just described, Christie, if it's an uncomfortable situation where your direct supervisor may, may not be a comfortable place to go, you have another layer to approach, which is the next layer up. Am I correct in this understanding that's how the policy works? So that, rather than us going to the president with the issues, my response to folks is, if you have an issue, highlight it to me so that you can then go off in the process if you know it. If you don't, I'll help get that information to you, or administration can. And then we would probably eventually hear from our president if it needs that much attention back to us, but otherwise, I would suggest we, we try and use the system that we have in place until we hear from somebody, including our president, that the system's not, not working well enough and we need to change it. What I heard you say, Todd, was you were feeling the system was not working well enough now?
I think there are some examples and situations where that is the case, I believe.
Even though you've tried to say to folks, here is the way you can, in fact, be heard, because that is important. We are an educational institution, so we hope to educate.
I don't know where to go with that, because we talked about it in executive session, so I feel like we just kind of did a rerun with extra editorial, but go ahead.
No, I just, I, I would say is with, Todd, if we don't have the original policy, we don't know what that read, and to go back to this, I think we're in a position where I think that the level of concerns that you have, I have confidence that, that with the couple of times I ran into a situation that Mr. Dunlap does a proper follow-up on it, I share your concerns too regarding this, there is a chain of command, and that unless we have a policy that better suits, that we're prepared to move on it, I think that what we do is we wait and put this policy as one of the ones that has an interest in being reviewed, so.
Any other comments? Before we call for a vote on it, I guess I wanted to make a comment that I, I, the process that we're going through now of reviewing all of the policies will involve a great number of people and a number of different eyes and positions and concerns, and hopefully we'll come out of it not just with this policy, but with other policies, with something that better addresses any concerns that everybody has. And I, it would be, I would be uncomfortable with the idea of just eliminating a policy without, as has already been expressed, some substitute that everybody's had a chance to weigh in on, so that all the interests that maybe we don't see in the instant right now are addressed through an appropriate procedure. So, while I appreciate you bringing this question forward to us, I would like to see this, this particular policy addressed as the other policies are going to be addressed through the process of, that the president's presently involved in. So, with that, if there's any, no, any other comments, we can have a vote on the motion, because the motion's been made and seconded.
Repeat the motion again, please.
Motion was to eliminate Policy 2.01.05. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, the motion fails.
Great. You have the answer, I don't have either.
The next item on the agenda is Tab 3, the Sports Complex Report from the Ad-Hoc Committee. President Dunlap.
And, Mr. Chairman, is this going to be a full slide presentation similar to what we saw before?
I don't know. You need a break?
Oh, I was going to say, it's, this is a lengthy process, that if it's a chance that we can take a five-minute break, that would be awesome.
We, I mean, we can take a five-minute breaks, that way we're not pressing anybody into timeframes that they may not be able to hold to.
Okay, very good.
I'll take off, five minutes.
Five-minute break. Back in five minutes. We're back in session after our short break, and we're continuing on then with new business, tab three. And this is a report on the ad hoc committee's report on the sports complex.
Thank you, Mr. Trust, or Mr. Chair and Trustees and NIC colleagues. The purpose of this report is to provide you the recommendations of an ad hoc committee that was appointed by yourselves to investigate the possibility of moving forward with a sports complex project. This is a project that has been discussed for quite some time. It has been lauded at times and it has been impugned at times. And so the purpose is to take a look at the parameters under which this project may or may not take place, and then to provide you with some recommendations. The premise under which this project was viewed is that NIC's Christiansen Gymnasium, which was built in 1939, is out of date. It is too small. It has considerable maintenance issues, and it is not large enough to hold the events that we host on campus, nor within the community. The largest venue in Coeur d'Alene is the 1,200-seat Schuler Auditorium, which is located on the NIC campus as well. The sports, the proposed sports complex would meet the current and future needs of NIC and also the ability to host events for the community. It provides an economic stimulus, has the potential to create new jobs, enhance community pride, and create a community gathering place. The process that we went through is that a number of years ago, vis-à-vis Riverstone, a project, a consultant was contracted with to investigate the potential for developing a sports complex and event center. The North Idaho College Board of Trustees developed a resolution to investigate that process and indicated that we would actively pursue and support efforts to construct a multipurpose athletic facility. The NIC administration was directed to form an ad hoc study committee and to consider this opportunity and determine if this project should move forward. The committee is made up of 17 individuals. It includes trustees, members of the college, well-respected members of the community, representatives from the city, LCDC, CEOs of organizations, including CEO of an event center, and represents a considerable cross-section of our community, is made up of very good minds, and there was enormous debate with this committee and investigation. As I mentioned, there was a study done in 2008 that looked at local market conditions, comparable facilities, market demand, building programs, financials, economic impact, and funding. And we, within our capacity and the data available, updated some of these areas that includes comparable facilities, financials, and funding options. The considerations that we weighed in updating this 2008 study was first of all and foremost the M&amp;O costs of developing and operating a sports complex that could be used as a, as an event center. And the consensus was that there would probably be a shortfall of a little over $100,000 a year in initial operating costs that would have to be covered in some form or fashion. We looked at fundraising that included a commitment from the Lake City Development Corporation to the tune of $10 million, and I'll discuss those criteria that they put in place in just a minute. And then we looked at the capacity for local fundraising. And we had Jim Fouchet, who happens to be here tonight, who was not a member of the committee, survey some of our community members to get a sense of whether there was capacity to raise that kind of money. And Mr. Fouchet has been actively involved with foundations. He was the former director of the Cootney Health Foundation, and he is currently a private consultant that works with foundations throughout the country. And it was his sense that it is possible within our community to raise the $5 million, but it would take two or three major donors to the tune of six or seven figures to help us get to that point. We also looked at how we would market this facility, what the considerations would be, and Mark Browning chaired that subcommittee and developed quite a few frequently asked questions and developed answers for those. And then the consensus for the design was that, first of all, we needed to select a site and that it needed to be right-sized and then pre-designed. What has been viewed up to this point are really some schematics that are hypothetical, if you will, to give a, an artist's rendition of what this might look like. And so because of that, and that that design was not fleshed out, there was considerable criticism about the quality of the proposed facility, when yet it had not even been designed at that point. I mentioned the LCDC, or Lake City Development Corporation, requirements to access the $10 million that they committed to this project. And first of all, North Idaho College would have to make a formal request to the Lake City Development Corporation by the end of this calendar year. They would engage a 30, third-party financial advisor to seek concurrence with the financials to ensure that they are accurate, and those are yet to be developed to the extent that it would represent the project. The current event center property needs to be selected, and there are two sites, as you are well aware, that are being considered, one in Riverstone and one next to the U.S. Bank Call Center. And one of the conditions, of course, is that tho, those sites must reside in the LCDC River District. Currently, neither one in total resides in that district, and a request would have to be made. And one of the properties would have to be annexed by the city as well. In terms of the fundraising, NIC will need to raise the proposed $5 million in fundraising and spend those dollars on proposed event center project and sports complex prior to spending any of LCDC partnership funds. And so the next steps would be the acquisition of the property, a design developed, and site prep, and permitting. In addition, event center management has been left open to whether we would hire a professional management organization to manage that type of a facility, or whether NIC should be given the latitude to devise a management strategy for themselves. Event center construction costs, a revalidation of the estimated costs for the event center as proposed, needs to be performed prior to the end of 2013 calendar year. So there's a number of requirements, three in particular, that need to be satisfied for LCDC's commitment. We were asked by Mr. Nielsen to take a look at other community colleges that may be participating in this similar type of a sports complex slash event center, to see if there was any comparables to what we were trying to do. And we surveyed eight other community colleges, and this is the list of those community colleges, and we looked at a variety of metrics for those. And so for each one of those other community colleges, we looked at the size of the facility that was either in place or was, in one instance, being designed, and they ranged from 23,000 square feet to 63,000 square feet. The number of seats in those eight different centers ranged from 1,550 to 6,500. And a question was asked whether they were operating in the black, and all of them indicated that they were operating in the black, some producing additional revenue for the college, others operating at the break-even point. The one project that is currently being fundraised for even had the foresight to put in place a, an endowment for the M&amp;O costs, so that as they moved forward, that, for example, in our instance, that $100,000 that we project for the M&amp;O costs would have a way to be covered. When our ad hoc committee met with the manager of the Spokane Arena and also the Cootney County Fairgrounds, both of them indicated that the sale of alcohol and charging for parking were critical for them to reach the break-even or to operate in the black. When we surveyed the eight other community colleges, none of them served alcohol and none of them charged for parking, and yet they were able to operate in the black. We also asked the question, how many events do you offer in that center that are not college events? And that ranged from 10% to 80%, and in terms of actual numbers, it ranged from 40 to 250 events per year that were non-college events. We asked about the sporting attendance at these different event centers, and it ranged from 100 individuals attending a sporting event to 4,000 individuals attending a sporting event. So you can see there's a wide range depending on the area, the community, and what makes fiscal sense for those different areas. We asked the question whether there was debt load, because with this project that we are proposing, it would not have a debt load associated with it. There were two community colleges that had a debt load. One was for a remodel and one was for a construction piece. And then the final question that was asked was, what is the population in your surrounding area within a 25-mile radius to get a perspective of the size of the community? And you can see that it ranges from 10,000 in population to 365,000 in population. And so if, although Spokane is more than 25 miles from where we are, it's fairly close. And so Coeur d'Alene fits in the middle ground with quite a few of these other community So to answer the basic questions, should the sports complex move forward? It was the consensus, although not necessarily unanimous, that the, there was adequate data and justification for the project to move to the next stage of development, and therefore a recommendation to the NIC Board of Trustees that the project should move forward. The second question we were asked to answer was what conditions and/or stipulations should be considered? First of all, that the facility be debt-free. Second of all, that the facility needs to be complementary to other facilities and businesses in our community rather than competitive. And so when you look at other centers within our community, whether it's the Croc Center, the Frontier Ice Center, the Hagadon Resort and Event Center, or other venues, we, we wanted to make sure that what we were offering would not compete with those, but rather complement those and provide opportunity for our community in terms of hosting graduations, in terms of attracting sporting events such as the high school tournaments and those types of things. The conversation ranged everything from hosting motocross to rodeo, and those were way outside the parameters of what we considered would be a feasible facility. We also think it's important that the NIC Board of Trustees determine an appropriate site. As I mentioned, there are two sites under consideration, and a decision will need to be made as to which site would be the best site. And there are a number of considerations ranging from parking to cost to size that will impact that decision. And that the facility needs to be right-sized. When the 2008 study was done, it was originally envisioned to have a facility that was on the order of six to 6,500 seats. Then for, for the planning purposes for the ad hoc committee, we looked at a 5,000-seat facility. And part of that consideration, as Mr. Nielsen pointed out earlier, is the amount of parking that is available, the amount of space on the site that is available for actual construction and that sort of thing. We also felt that LCDC would need to adjust the boundary, and that was one of their criteria. And then depending on the property selected, whether a city annexation was a consideration or not. or not. We also felt that while the facility supports community events, NIC would be the owner, operator, and primary user of that facility. And then that NIC established an advisory committee that would work with NIC to look at what types of events could be attracted to this area, and also provide advice on the management of that facility. The, the other thing is that a plan needs to be developed for obtaining public polling and support. And there has been a wide variety of opinions that have been rendered about the project. Some ad hoc surveys that were conducted by the Coeur d'Alene Press, there were editorials, there's been comments to the editor, and so I think part of this is that we need a better sense of community support and that we need to be conducting forums for the community at large. The fundraising for the $5 million needs to begin once the land is selected and secured and not before, because it will be at that point that there is a firm commitment whether or not to move forward with the project, and it is at that point that potential donors will become engaged and attached to this project. And we felt that any further investigation, data collection, pre-design, or analysis be conducted by a consultant with expertise in development, operation, design, construction, or management of these types of facilities. The ad hoc committee had a considerable amount of diversity and expertise, excuse me, however, none of us were experts in the construction or management of these types of facilities. And so I think we've done a, a very good job with the data that we have had available and the additional information that we have collected. And Mr. Chair, that completes our recommendations to the board. We would ask that over the next month, the board consider these recommendations. Tonight, this is for information only, and we look for a decision in, in the future in terms of whether your decision is to move forward or not.
All right. Are there any questions, comments, Ron?
Ooh.
One at a time now.
One at a time, yeah. First of all, Joe, is, as you go through this, there is no question on anybody that is associated with this college that has attended any sporting event here that doesn't see the need for an athletic center here. And so there are certain things that you almost have to say, is put this on the table? No, it's off the table. There, I don't think you'll find anybody that would debate that for you. We put, I had the chance to go sit through the last ad hoc. I wasn't a part of it, but I thought, you know, this is a very important decision, developing a lot of press within the community, and I felt like that I wanted to hear firsthand from this group of 17 people and to get a sense, because sometimes the message is a little bit mixed always when it's coming, and it all depends on the person, it's the best salesman that gets the people convinced. So I went through there, spent an hour and a half, and at the end of this, there was a simple question, do we go forward or not? And the consensus was that, yeah, we should continue going, but the message, as I read here, says that we say we are, are suggesting we go forward. As I read through our original resolution that talked about the strong need for an athletic center, it talked about the impact that would be at no expense to the taxpayers. And so you put that on, saying we don't haven't discovered that, and that we cannot rely on NIC for any funding associated with this. So with that, as I look at this recommendation here that strongly talks about, you know, we need to pursue, we need to, to have adequate data, and when it turn adequate data drives everything we do, and so as I talk to the people that were there, we're not part of the college institution, that were the private sector, asked them, are you comfortable with the financial data that drives making this thing work or not? And every single one of them said, we're not. And so when you say that you don't believe the data is, is what it is, we're talking about tripling the size of our attendance for this college. I'm not sure if that's a good number, but that's what this financial data suppose, and it, and it says there that the, the loss will be $100,000. Out of the 17 people, the six that I talked to said to me, Ron, I think that number is way understated. So saying that, as we go forward, we don't know what the size is. We started out with a facility that was going to be 6,000, it's winning the paper, it's a 6,000-square-foot facility, now we're hearing three to six. What is the size we need before we go forward? We had one location that supposedly for three years, we've been talking about this location going there, and now it's not on the table anymore, moving this around. We have a problem discussing where we're going to put parking at some of these locations. We talked about huge growth in attendance to our sports complex, and we're talking about a budget we think's a little bit understated, and the M&amp;O costs on there, we believe, are underestimated. So doing all this, Joe, as I look at this, I just say, how can we recommend, as a board, to go forward with hiring a consultant that's going to give us data that, 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 we need some, a clear understanding of what we're, what we need, where we are, and does this fit within the resolution that we sent forward, that we are not making any long-term financial commitments to this institution, because our primary responsibility is to educate kids, our students. So if this takes away from that, we have to step out of the way, because we're not in there. When you look at some of the costs of what it takes to manage this facility, I think that as we talked to, to Mr. Timison when he was there, it was $56,000. I says, who's going to run a complicated sports, sports complex like this that will be drawing a salary of $56,000? Well, we live in a nice part of the world. Well, there's a lot of public entities that pay a lot more than $56,000 for their employees, and there's a lot of people that run complexes like that that will not do it for that kind of money. So I think that saying this long lecture is, after evaluation, seeing this, I'm not sure, Joe, we can do anything other than say, let's just keep this ad hoc committee going forward, answer the, the important questions, which is size, location, parking, growth, budget, before we make any recommendations at all.
Okay. Kristy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first, I'd like to very publicly thank the committee for all the hard work. We do recognize how much effort went into this, and I think you've probably felt, if some of you are here tonight, hesitation from the board kind of all the way along, because it, we have to struggle with, is this part of our mission? And for me, it's been a little bit of a stretch of the mission. As Ron said, boy, we need that fieldhouse, we need that athletic center, and we want to get that for our students. However, not sure that this is the right way to do it. For me, I have a couple unanswered questions. Doug Parker very graciously talked to the Coeur d'Alene Press about the possibility of donating some property. I don't know what the status of that is, and so I would want to know about that. Joe, you mentioned maybe we'll come back next month and the trustees could have a decision. I, like Ron, I'm not prepared for a decision. The first thing I would want before we made any decisions, the questions answered that Ron put forth, but even before that, I want those public forums, because I just don't know if the support's there. And since it's a stretch of our mission, making it a, an event center rather than an athletic facility, I would really want to hear from the public. So for, I guess my question in that is, what's the latest information on, on property? And is Mr. Parker able to give us any further information?
Mr. Parker is engaged in conversation with Washington Trust Bank and is still working on trying to acquire that property.
Judy?
And the Washington Trust Bank are the current owners of the property. That's why he's engaged with them.
That's correct. Right.
Mr. Chair? Yeah. And, and I understand he's been incredibly generous in his conversations, and we don't take that lightly. Very much appreciate it, but we really don't know exactly what that is, and I suppose he's not in a position really to say, except maybe give us a nod that he'd like to help. And so that puts us, again, in a, in a very precarious position. We couldn't possibly move forward without knowing a little more about a possible site.
Well, and I, I would agree. I mean, I wouldn't expect a decision without having a more definitive answer there, and I think we're hoping that that definitive answer will happen in the near future.
Todd?
One point of clarification, I'm on the committee, so I'm aware of this, since we're given the information regarding the sites, it does need to be noted that there is a portion of the site that Mr. Parker is talking to the bank about that's still actually retained by the railroad. And so there would actually have to be two transactions to buy that property. Now, the understanding we have, and there's been communication with the railroad, is that whatever transaction occurs with the property, there would be a similar price structure for the railroad property also, or be somewhere in that ballpark, so, but I just want to point that out, because, because there would actually be a second transaction required to...
You knew the comment, Ron.
And, and one of the questions I would have, Joe, is that as I look through the report of these sports complexes, there's a number of those that the, the colleges are not the, the owners, as they are the major user of this, and that there's other city-county-run facilities that they're working out of there, and that they have major tenants. One of them's a police academy that is a major tenant that, that pays all the expenses associated with that, and the college is able to use that and generate. Now, you don't have the, the M&amp;O cost all year long, you just have it during your events spread out there. If we looked at any other alternative ways, it sounds like an incredible opportunity for somebody that's, that may be in the private sector that's willing to come alongside Mr. Parker's generous offer, and to be able to take control of this and take this away from the concerns of, you know, can we, and we can make a commitment, we'll have these 43 games per year, host these events, and we can become a, a supporter of this complex and pay some fee associated with that without having to take all the risk. Have we looked at that?
We, we have not. However, we have looked at, very cursory, at having a professional organization manage that facility, so there would be individuals who do that for a living that would have that level of expertise. I, I think what we've discovered in looking at those eight community colleges, first of all, that was a very wise decision to take a look at those. And I think when we look at the data and the range of those different metrics, we've come to the conclusion that each community has had to right-size and adapt their operation to best suit, suit the needs of their community. And so we see different sized arenas, we see different cost structures, we see different relationships, and so the operative question to us will be, what is the right size for this community? What are the right types of events for this community? And is it a right facility for this community? So there, there's still, no doubt, questions to be answered. I think based on the data that's available to this committee, we, we've answered the questions as best we can. I don't know that we have the level of expertise to take that to the next level without engaging somebody who has that kind of expertise.
Ron?
So, but, and do you agree with that, Joe, that this, if, if we do not see this 300% increase in the attendance of our sports arena, and we don't get these six to eight major venues to come in there, which is our two largest revenue sources, that there, if we don't get this, this thing becomes a house of cards, and it becomes a huge financial debt. Do you agree with that?
Well, what I, what I agree with is that we can what-if this thing to death. And there are a lot of unanswered questions, and you're not going to have 100% of the definitive data available to make a non-risk decision about this. I mean, with every type of endeavor, and you as a private businessman understand that, there's a, an element of risk involved, and you try and collect the best data you can. And so I, I think that's, there's still more that we can collect, but I, I don't know that we're going to get to the point where there are no more unanswered questions.
Well, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, go ahead.
In, in response to that, in the private sector, you're right, as we, we measure the risk, we measure the reward, we develop a window, and then we make some assumptions that's somewhere in the middle. When we take an assumption that shows a tremendous increase in revenue and from the outside source, those things are not a guess, they have to be pretty solid, because if you do not deliver that increase in those concerts, and some of these here, I bet you we didn't do, is how many 2,000-seat arenas are in a, in a 25 geographic area they're going to draw from, and from the competitive natures that you point on there, there's only so much saturation you can get to have this in. So my big concern would be is if we lose half of those major concerts that are the huge revenue producers, and we don't get the general admission up. Students are great to go to these sports events, but the revenue comes from the general admission ticket and the parking that goes with it, because the parking's at $3 a parking spot, and that's, most of these events will tell you it's beer and parking, and if we lose that, this thing comes down and it becomes a statistic like some of these across the country that are million-dollar drains to the community. I just don't want to be a part of something like that until we have that.
Well, and I don't want to be a part of that either, but in a comparison with other community colleges that are doing this, and I'm not talking about private arenas or institutions that are not associated with community colleges, these are, are very successful. And the one in Michigan, for example, they were strictly a, a sports complex, they hired an individual to come in and reinvent it as a partial event center, and it took a three-year period for him to turn that around and to become profitable. And so there's no question that initially there, we are not going to be in the black, and hence that was, one of the findings was that the M&amp;O costs would exceed the revenues. And whether you think $100,000 is the right number or not, I mean, it's certainly up for debate, but that was what the best minds that we could put to that came up with. And so I, I, I certainly don't have all the definitive answers that you'd like to have tonight, and I understand that, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Kristy?
President Dunlap, I, I had a question on some of the conditions, I don't know if there's any LCDC board members here tonight or anybody, but I, I had a question on, let me find it real quick. The question was the calendar, that part of, part of their conditions, and first I'd like to acknowledge that North Idaho College has been a huge beneficiary of urban renewal dollars, and we're incredibly grateful for that, and I firmly believe that urban renewals should support education, and we appreciate it. So with that out of the way, the event center construction cost, the very last bullet point, they wanted the proposal needs to be performed prior to the end of the 2013 calendar year. And I guess what I would like to suggest is that maybe it doesn't have to move that fast, and I know that there, they think there's some considerations there, but I, I happen to not think that it's that dire. If, if we hear from positive news, perhaps from Mr. Parker, and then we maybe have a donation of a piece of land, or at least partial piece of land, I don't see why we couldn't talk to LCDC again, certainly about infrastructure, and why we couldn't do a capital campaign, if that's the direction we wanted to go for, an athletic center, not so much a community event center. I, like Ron, I, I'm afraid that we won't be able to sustain that, and I'd like that we just focus on the needs of NIC. If the community needs an event center, I'd like to see a private entity step up and do that. We know we need an athletic center, and we know that Al's got a number of programs he could bring to us that support athletics, and we would keep that facility moving all the time. But I am really, really hesitant to think about concerts and such that would compete with the, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe and, and their facility, with the Hagadon Corporation and, and the banquets they bring in. I'm really concerned that we wouldn't be able to say we would never compete, and we don't want to do that, that, we're not in that business. So that's just my two cents. I'd, I'd like to have some of those questions answered, and most certainly the, the public piece, before we could consider moving forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note it was 8:15 on August 28th that Kristy and I agreed on something unanimously, so write that down and carve that day.
I'm in writing.
Judy?
Back to the agree, the report from the committee.
Back to the report from the committee. On the report that's submitted to us, it has the committee members' names, but I think the plan was to then have them sign off on it. I can't tell why they're on here, but then I think I heard Ron mention that some had signed or some had not. Probably having an update from the board on those who, if they did not sign, their thoughts, so that we can learn what are the concerns they had that they didn't feel got recognized well enough here that we would want to put in the pool of information.
I've had personal contact with four of these that have refused to sign this recommendation based on that they want to gather more data and keep this going, so that, I would assume that there was some intent to have these members sign this, showing their full support. And the fact that four of these will not sign for some various reasons, an indication that we, I think we still, again, need to go down the road and get some more information, so...
Any other comments? Judy.
And that was my point in asking about that, is if the folks didn't feel like it signed it, if they would be willing to help us know why, so we can add that to our shopping list.
Any other comments?
I guess I'd like to make a comment before we end this report, and that is that this board passed a resolution that had six points in it, that we wanted the committee to work within, and that's still in effect. And that addresses, quite frankly, a number of the things that we've been talking here tonight. We wanted to make sure that NIC was in control of the project, and the, we wanted to make sure that the participation included consideration of the impact of the operating costs on taxpayer obligations, that we wanted to make sure that the initial construction and land acquisition cannot rely upon NIC to any significant extent, that participation shall not significantly impact NIC's capital fund resources, that our hope was that participation should not significantly impact sources of ongoing planned grants, scholarships, financial assistance, or project support, and that if NIC is to have sole responsibility for maintenance and operations after the initial construction, it must be the primary voice in the construction and planning of the facility. And finally, that the participation must include consideration of and funding assistance for the anticipated costs of ongoing staffing, maintenance, and operation of the facility for approximately five years. That resolution is, was the premise upon which this committee was formed, this ad hoc committee. And we gave that committee no resources to do any work, and we asked that committee to go forward and use the local expertise and their individual expertise, and you formulated, I think, a well-rounded committee with a lot of expertise from the community. And I don't see anything in your report here tonight that says, "We are recommending that we build this facility." I mean, I don't hear that at all. And so, your report seems to say, "This has enough merit that we should go forward to another step of developing more reliable information that might not be, we might not be able to get for the no cost that we've put into the project so far." But, having said all that, we probably still need to know, before we can go any further, whether or not there's property available for us to build on. And so, I suspect, and I'm kind of reading between the lines, I think, about your recommendation, but in terms of holding off for a month, is to see what happens with regard to any potential for having available property, because that's going to be our first consideration. Is there available property? Is the price right? Is the size right for the needs that we have? And then we can decide, do we want to move forward with spending money, if need be, on a more, a more professional analysis of these questions that have been raised by everybody tonight. So, I want to thank your committee. I was on the committee, so I guess I'm thanking myself, and I don't mean to do that. But I want to thank your committee, because I sat into all those meetings, and I know that there was an awful lot of effort and discussion put into exploring these things, and you've come to us with concerns about moving forward. And those concerns are, they reflect the concerns that this board had when it first passed the resolution. And so, I would like to just have your report sit as it stands, until we have additional information as to whether or not there's really any place to put this that is affordable. Because if we don't have that, then this project is not going to go anyplace, and we don't need to spend any money on anything. And that probably is the first question that needs to be asked, and until we have an answer to that, what the choices are and how much they cost, then there's nothing more we can do. So, I do appreciate very much the committee's work, and I want to thank the committee members, a number of them are here, and they put a lot of additional time in, outside the committee meetings. And other than getting some bacon and eggs in the morning, they got nothing for it, so...
That was about all we could offer at 7:00 in the morning for these individuals that gave up their time and considerable amount of time to participate. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the Board Share Report. And the report that I have is pretty short. The board, I think all of the members of the board are planning on attending a conference put on by ACCT, which is the Association, I think, Association of Community Colleges, or something like that. That's close. In Seattle. And this is an opportunity, I've been to one of these sessions, I know Christie and Judy have been, but it's a great opportunity for us to meet with other trustees from other community colleges, and also go through seminars that deal with our responsibilities as trustees, and our relationship with the administration, and our relationship with our duties and obligations as trustees to the community. And it's been a very worthwhile activity in the past, and we're planning on doing that, and it's in first part of October, I think, October 3rd through about the 5th. And other than that, I really don't have anything to report, other than, we have been working on this, trying to put together a workshop date for professional technical, because there is, I think, without question on this board, a commitment to move forward with trying to solve the professional technical facilities problems that we have. It's drug on probably longer than everybody wanted it to be, but trying to get all the board members together, quite frankly, beyond these monthly meetings, is difficult. They're busy people who have other duties and obligations, and so, I think it's important to have that workshop, that we have all of the trustees present, and we're trying real hard to get a date. We thought we had one, but it slipped by us. So, we are going to move forward with setting up a workshop on the professional technical facilities issue. There was a resolution, a motion passed last academic year, to have a workshop on tenure. That will happen in the future at some point in time. And we haven't set the date on that. Quite frankly, we were waiting to make sure that everybody was back in session, and getting through the opening days and opening week or so before we set the date, so that faculty and staff would have an opportunity to come to that workshop and participate in it, so that we can get the input from the college community, as well as input from any folks in the general community. And we will be setting the date on that, hopefully, far enough in advance that everybody will be able to get a chance to prepare for that, to the extent that they desire to do Other than that, I don't have anything else in my report. But the floor is now open for remarks for the good of the order. Does anyone have any comments? Judy.
A couple, but the key one, I think, Mr. Chair, you might want to identify also, and that is, the issue that's just bubbled up this week about community theater and summer theater, which is sometimes described as a community theater of North Idaho College. Probably the first distinction is, we have nothing to do with it, other than sharing a facility, but apparently, there is some now-community concern about how well, what its future is. And I think, as a board member, I'd like to be sure to say that, as we learn more information, and we have none so far, other than there's apparently a struggle for how to keep it alive, part of our community college role will be to see how we can help. At the same time, we need to balance what our costs are to provide facilities, and I know we've struggled before with fees on how we share in the community, and yet taxpayers can expect to have responsible management of those costs. So, I'm hoping maybe by the next month's agenda, if we have some information, we can be available, accessible to looking at that issue.
Judy, where will we get the information?
I'm assuming that the community theater folk would come back to us. I don't know how that works, but I know we already have some relationship that probably will need to be discussed some more, as we learn more.
Yeah, Joe can probably talk to this too, but I've had people ask questions about that. We are gathering information, because we don't know. This is a decision that was made within the last two or three days. And it was, quite frankly, I think, a surprise to everybody, although there was a suggestion that it might happen, I think it was a surprise. And so, how it impacts NIC, and is something that we need to find out. And quite honestly, from everything I know to this date, nobody from the community theater group contacted NIC prior to this decision being made, in order to engage us in any way. So, I could be wrong on that, but I have not received any information to the contrary so far. So, we're still in the mode of trying to gather information, to see what the impact's going to be on NIC, and also to see how that's going to play out in the future, because it may well be that other people decide to pick up the community theater project. But it is going to impact NIC in terms of scheduling, in terms of other events, you know, if that time slot opens up. My understanding is, they had a year left on their contract, and so now, it's going to be a matter of us taking the initiative to fill up that time. And we've had opportunities to do that in the past, and we need to probably explore that. So, it really is going to impact NIC, and we need to have more information, and hopefully, we'll have it next month.
Mr. Chair, so, we, you kind of really haven't said what the decision was. What was their decision?
The decision was to do away with any of the, any plays next year, all of them, cancel all of them.
Was that their board directors?
Yes.
And what did they, did they say what they based that upon? Is that what we're trying to find out?
That decision was based on financial exigency. They are about $90,000 in arrears, and it was a financial decision. And they owe us as part of that, and Graydon Stanley, who is responsible for that area, will be meeting with their board chair here in the very near future, to have a conversation about that.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification on the arrears, because I understood you say they also have another year contract with us?
They had another year on the contract left with us, so that it would be renegotiated in another year. However, based on the difficulty they've experienced this year with subscribers to a number of their productions, they made the decision that they were going out of business.
So, the contract then is?
Is null and void.
Do they have an exit clause in it?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
We'll learn that, okay.
Yeah, let's let Todd have a chance here.
No, that's okay. Well, I guess two questions, if you know it off the top of your head, between you and Ron Graydon. In a normal year, was that a plus for us, a break-even, or a minus? And do we have any idea approximately what is owed to us in arrears?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, trustee Banducci. In the past, it's been a plus for us. They cover our employee expenses that are associated with that. We have rental costs that have been paid. Our history with Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater is, it's never been a loss. It's been a positive arrangement for us. This particular year, payment's not due until the middle of October, so in this, at this particular point, they're not actually in arrears, but they're certainly concerned about the amount that they may owe us, and how they're going to be able to do that based on their performance and attendance this summer. Over the course of this next month, in my negotiations with them, I think that's what we'll be resolving, is can they meet the dollar amount? I've asked Justin Van Eaton, who's worked directly with them, to give me all of those expenses, provide that to me. I'll sit at the table with them, we'll negotiate that out, and I'll be able to give you a complete report probably within a month.
Follow-on question, sir, if I may. Ballpark figure, I mean, order of magnitude, are we talking 10,000, 50,000, 100,000? And I guess I'm curious to the magnitude of that number, because then I got to look at Ron and go, what does that do to us when we're talking about 11% reduction, and we're shuffling and Lita's working like crazy, and now, maybe we have some rental income that we thought we would get, that we've got capital costs already out, and employees, and now, maybe we have to make up for that possibly?
You know, I suspect it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about $50,000. That's the bad news. The good news is, it falls within auxiliary services, an area that is supported by our own enterprises. So, in terms of general fund dollars and that concern, it's less that way. We have a balanced budget for auxiliary services and shooter that would be affected by that loss, but we have the opportunity, since it's an enterprise account, to try to make it up in other ways. There was mention about the opportunity to utilize the shooter for additional events during the summer, and so, we'll be working toward that end and trying to capitalize on other opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments for the good of the order? Judy.
Just to follow up for my board colleagues, in June, we had the IBE, Idaho Business for Education Group speak with us, and a highlight was trying to, as an organization, hear from businesses on the survey for educational needs and opportunities. That survey, remember, was one that was extended, and so, I wanted to highlight to our board members who didn't have a chance to complete the survey. It's online. You can do so, that's also the case for the public, as we run this program, and it's, the website is surveymonkey.com/IBE survey. But we'll, we can get a way to get that on our website and get the word out, because that is part of what the partnering we want to do with IBE, and the Albertson Foundation as well, on providing good services.
And just for the record, Teacher Meyer, I did my report right after you did that. It's been submitted, so...
Thank you for that note of endorsement. That is very good. In that case, we probably want to go home quick, but one last thing is, will you be, will we be learning more about K-Tech? Because they changed, we have a new director, and we used to have them on the agenda sometime, sort of?
K-Tech has a new executive director, Tim Fortune. We had a board meeting today, and their enrollment is solid for the first. They had, if you know, that they originally built this for 300 students. They ended up putting a third shift on, a third classroom arrangements, which gave kids a chance to go to school from 3:30 to 5:30, and they've eliminated it this year. There was some reasons for that, because we lost our executive director towards the end of the season, and some of the promotion left. But after meeting with some of the students and counselors, they're going to be full through their normal class period, and with the exception of the construction industry. And of course, they closed it down based on statistical data from last year, and the construction business is up, so they're already, have launched it for the next semester to make sure that they get that, and so... But if you don't know Tim Fortune, he's a great guy, and he's trying to get out in the community and speak to the different groups, so...
Do we have access to the enrollment data by discipline? Because that impacts our planning in terms of slots.
Mr. Browning is way ahead of you. He was at the board meeting today, asking for the same statistical data.
Perfect.
So, we will have a full report of not only what are enrolled today, but also the number of graduates and placement rates for them, and we hope that that 20% increase that you saw this year on the PTE side, that a portion of those could have been from some of the K-Tech-continued students that came on, and so...
Thank you.
We had talked maybe about having Mr. Fortune come in and give us a progress report the next meeting. I don't think we've even asked him yet, but just to answer the question that Judy had asked, because it is helpful for us to get to know him, and it's helpful for us to have an opportunity to just have him tell us what they're doing out there. So, we'll probably be extending an invitation to him to come in at the next meeting. Any other comments for the good of the order?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, two quick items, both of these related to the ASNC president, Benai Achievers. First of all, I'd like to note, for those of you who weren't at the all-employee meeting, I believe for the first time in the history of North Idaho College, our student body president was invited and took us up on that invitation to join us and talk to all the employees at the opening. And I wish you could have been there, because he did an exceptional job representing the students and talking about their investment in this institution and their partnership with all the stakeholders. So, certainly wanted to recognize Benai, because he did an exceptional job with that. Secondly, Benai would want me to note for you that today is National Bowtie Day. Today, he chastened me for my failure to ob- Today, he chastened me for my failure to observe that, and he's the only one in the room who was able to. So, Benai, congratulations.
And on that note, we are adjourned.